Conduct in the City Council Chambers, Rules of Decorum for the Public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm used to saying evening when we say that, but good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Special Meeting for Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaf. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following methods. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org. They may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and all comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's, this afternoon's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Orshel Cryer, followed by an invocation by Greg Munch. So if you would join us, please.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me, please? Father in heaven, we're so thankful that we have this opportunity to come together today. It's that season, Father, where we as citizens exercise our privilege and right to vote for candidates. And we're so thankful, Father, that we have these willing men here that have committed to serve our community and will continue to do so through the upcoming years. We pray, Father, that you will work in their hearts and minds today as they look at the business of our city to help continue to make it a safe and pleasant place to live. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 Greg, thank you so much, sir. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrup.
Here.
Councilmember Chivara.
Here.
All right, before we go too far, for those of you who don't usually come here and join us, welcome. Nice to see you all. And if you have one of these, and everybody second grade and above has one of these, I know that, you might want to silence, you know, your ringtone. Some of them are a lot of fun, but you might want to go ahead and do that. All right, first item on this evening's agenda are proclamations. First proclamation is for the Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week. I have asked that Councilman Bryant read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor and privilege to recognize not only all finance and accounting professionals, but specifically those who work here for the city of Taft by declaring September 23rd through 2020, or 27th of 2024 as Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week in the city of Taft. Whereas the history of accounting as an established practice dates back several millennia and is vital to business success. And whereas the field of accounting has undeniably developed significantly since its introduction in pre-modern times and has experienced robust advancements throughout the Middle Ages and the Renaissance period. Whereas the city's finance department provides accounting, financial administration, and reporting, budgeting, investment billing, accounts receivable, accounts payable, and payroll services for the city of Taft. And whereas the finance department staff is privy to the most intimate details of the city and have access to facts and figures we could never collectively understand. And whereas it's the most appropriate that we recognize the importance of our finance department staff as they play a critical role in providing accurate and timely information to the city manager and city council so that sound business decisions can be made on behalf of the city and its citizens. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Taft does hereby formally recognize the unsung heroes of the city of Taft's finance department accordingly, and hereby declares September 23rd through 27th of 2024 as Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week, dated the 17th day of September 2024, and signed by the city council.
All right. So who's going to come up here and accept this award?
All of them.
All of them? All right. Your acceptance speeches cannot exceed three minutes each.
No, I don't want to get in.
Oh, you gotta be in there. Come on, idiot. To reiterate the invitation, the mic is available for any of you, lovely ladies. Thank you all. Thank you all very, very much for all you do. All right, next up, another proclamation for Hunger Action Month. This proclamation declaring September 2024 Hunger Action Month in Kern County. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Kern County, where in 2022, 15.9% of people face hunger and 22.1% of children do not know when their next meal will come from. And whereas everyone needs nutritious food to thrive, and in every community in America, people are working hard to provide for themselves and their families. Yet in 2022, 44 million people, one in seven, including more than 13 million children, one in five, faced food insecurity in the United States. That includes more than 144,000 residents in Kern County. And whereas the wonderful Community Food Center at the CAPK Food Bank is committed to working alongside various partners and organizations to fight these food insecurity numbers in Kern County. And whereas the wonderful Company Food Center at the CAPK Food Bank distributed over 20 million pounds of food through more than 200 pantry and commodity locations throughout Kern County. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the movement to end hunger by taking action, including volunteering, social media campaigns, donations, and the annual Feed the Need Food Drive at Kern County Fair on September 24th, 2024, to ensure the community and everybody in it has the food they need to thrive. And whereas food banks across the country, including CAPK Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in Kern County. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Taft does hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Hunger Action Month in Taft and call this observance to the attention of our citizens. Dated this day, 17th of September 2024, signed by all city council members. I have to reflect for a moment on those numbers. Think about that. Kern County, California is a breadbasket. We grow the food that feeds the world. In spite of these numbers that I just presented you with, one of the plans I've heard coming out of Sacramento to solve our water problem is to fallow half a million of the most productive farm acres in the valley, in the United States. But we can take solace in the fact that some of those half a million fallowed acres will end up with solar panels on them. Now, I don't know if that's going to feed anybody. I have never seen a solar panel that will spit out a Happy Meal or chicken wings. But maybe they've developed something I don't know about. So this is a travesty. It's a terrible thing. And what we're doing is going to exacerbate this if it were not for the efforts of volunteers like these gentlemen. We're going to stand up and talk to us, as well as everybody else. So take it seriously. Can you imagine your grandchildren going to bed with an empty stomach on a regular basis? I told my kids when I was running around the world hunting, I said, you know what? On any given day in America, you're living. Bad day in America. What's a bad day in America? You drop your iPhone, crack the screen, get a flat tire on your BMW, can't get the right ticket to a concert. I've been places in this world where, on their best day, people survive. Their very best day. And to think that's happening in Kern County, hard to imagine, is it not? So that's my extra words on this. I believe we have somebody here to accept this. Gentlemen?
I expect that you can step on and say a few words.
Here we are.
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely. Thank you very much. By all means.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. By all means, please help say a few words.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow Taft councilmembers. A very rousing introduction. I appreciate that. Don't disagree with a lot of what you said, but we'll leave it at that. But I'm pleased to be here today to bring awareness to Hunger Action Month. I'm Jeremy Tobias. I'm CEO of Community Action Partnership of Kern, CAPK, is what we refer to it as. We do a lot of things in the community, provide head start services, WIC services, different things. But one of our main functions is we're the government-designated food bank for the county of Kern. And so this is Hunger Action Month, so we wanted to come before the community and let you know what's going on. The community of Taft in Kern County have extremely high levels of food insecurity, as you heard in the proclamation. And the CAPK Food Bank is on the front lines of that struggle. Over the past year alone, the CAPK Food Bank, our client engagements have doubled in the past year, from roughly about 100,000 engagements or touchpoints with clients a month to about 200,000 monthly at this point. We distribute, the CAPK Food Bank distributes 1.8 million pounds of food every month here in Kern County. In Taft, we have a huge footprint in Taft, and the food bank manager here is going to talk to you about that in a second. But serving a community of our size here in Taft and Kern County, which is a huge county, only works with very strong partnerships. Our food bank utilizes a network of 150 local partner organizations, including several in Taft, which contribute about 200 total distribution sites in Kern County. I think one thing that's important to point out is our typical client that we serve. It's not so much the person on the corner with the sign that you drive by and say, oh, I need food. We help those people, but that's really not who we're serving. I think the public sees that and thinks, oh, that's who they're feeding. Our main clientele, our typical client, is the working poor. These are the people in our community that have low-wage jobs, sometimes more than one job. They're doing the tough, blue-collar, labor-intensive work that is absolutely vital for our society and our economy. But today, in today's day and age, they get home and they're paying for rent and utilities, and that's it. And they don't have enough money to make ends meet when it comes to putting food on the table and other things that them and especially their children need. They tend to do without. So by our food bank filling that gap, we play a vital role in keeping that family a little more stabilized and keeping them from potentially falling into homelessness or on the streets. So I want to thank you for allowing me the time to speak today, and I want to thank you for this meaningful proclamation. And with me today is Kelly Lowry. He's our food bank manager, administrator. And he's the one that's out there doing this work. So I'm going to let him say a few words about our footprint here in Taft.
Good afternoon, council members. It's an honor to be able to be here today and to represent not only our food bank, but all of our agency partners right here from Taft here for Hunger Action Month. You know, Hunger Action Month is an opportunity for us to make sure everybody understands the breadth of the need of food insecurity right here in Taft and in larger, in a larger sense across Kern County, and the proclamation has done that. But I also wanted to highlight the work that is being done. As Jeremy mentioned, we distributed about 20 million pounds of food last year. On track for more than that this year. And I wanted to bring it home to just Taft here. We have about six agency partners right here in Taft, who you're very familiar with. St. Mary's Catholic Church is one of them, Taft Need Center, Miss Lucille, the Five Loaves Pantry here in Taft. So these are our folks right here from your own community that, on a week after week basis, are distributing this food that we're bringing into the community. What we know is, as Jeremy mentioned, the need has doubled over the last year. And so there's a whole segment of your population here that had never engaged or needed to engage with the food bank, but now is engaging with services as a result of inflation and other things that are taking a toll on families these days. And through that escalation of need, I'm proud to say that our food bank, along with the agency partners from right here in Taft, have risen to meet that need. Over the last 12 months, we've distributed just here in Taft over 700,000 pounds of food to those that are food insecure here in Taft. And that equates to more than 30 pounds of food for every food insecure person every single month. And so that's not an insignificant thing, and we couldn't do it without these great agency partners from right here in Taft. And so Hunger Action Month is about recognizing what's being done, but also what's left to do. There's still a lot of work to be done. And so we appreciate the opportunity to partner with you and to brainstorm with you because we have a very bold strategy to be the first county in America to end food insecurity. I believe we can do it, and I believe that if we partner together strategically, we can achieve that goal. I want to invite each of you personally to come to the food bank. I'd love to talk to you. I'd love to give you a tour and to kind of explain a little bit more about how it works. And I'd love to see you at the food bank sometime. The last thing I want to leave you with is, as Jeremy mentioned, and it was in the proclamation, next week at the Kern County Fair on Tuesday, we have an annual food drive called Feed the Need. And it's an opportunity for residents and folks to donate six cans of food to the food bank, and they get in for free to the fair. So it's a great thing that the fair has enabled us to do, to be able to make a difference in our community, but also to be able to get into the fair for free. So just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that opportunity. But there's a lot of ways that you can be a part of the fight to end food insecurity. There's ways to support the food bank financially so that we can continue to grow our services and meet the need for more people. You can come to the food bank and volunteer, roll your sleeves up and help put food in boxes. We're always looking for volunteer drivers. There's individuals who have experience driving box trucks or pickup trucks who say, you know, I can come and volunteer some time going around and picking up some of the rescued food that we rescue from grocery stores and then redistribute to those in need. There's all kinds of ways that you can help and be a part of the work. And I would just invite you to come and be a part of the solution to end food insecurity in Taft and in Kern County. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, I think we have some questions for you, sir. Mayor Protem Cryer?
It was interesting. You said that the town has approved of 1 million tons up to 2 million ton, or two, you know, as far as people receiving, gone up that much. And you were saying about inflation and a lot of big causes. I agree totally. But do you think Bidenomics has had a lot to do with it too, possibility in that?
We try at CAPK to, you know, not be political and look into, you know, some of those kind of positions. We just recognize the realities for what they are, and that is that
I understand.
For one reason or another, the lines are longer than they've ever been before. And so we're just looking for ways to try to... There's a lot of people that are a lot smarter than me who are trying to figure out how to make those lines shorter and how to affect the economy to do that. In the meantime, we're trying to feed people that are hungry today.
I agree with you totally. I'm not being facetious on that part, but you know, it comes awful how great Bidenomics has worked. He's got a lot of credit for it. But my concern is the senior citizens. They're on fixed income and everything. Social Security, and it's only going up like 2% a year. It's kind of hard to live on that.
Sure.
And they're the ones I feel sorry for because they can't get a job or get a second job. They just can't do it. And you know, as far as farmers and farmworkers and stuff, I'm not saying there's some group, this deal has gone there with the labor contractors and stuff, but I know most of our, we have about 400 employees. I'm retired now from it, but at the time. But they were making minimum 36,000. I have people working 80,000 a year, 60,000 a year. The farmworkers were paying out in the fields and stuff. And they were getting good, but you know, they drive nice cars. There's a lot of people getting paid very, very well. But yes, they need help. I know the schools, they have free food for the children that go to school, for the students and everything. And I just feel that some of it is over the rated, but I feel bad for the people on Social Security or retired or people who are disabled and can't do it, or mental illness, people who can't, who can't, obviously can't work and function and stuff. They're the ones that really need help and stuff. And I'm aware of what you do at St. Mary's there. They live across the street from me. And I do volunteer to help out when I'm able to, help hand the food out there to them and box them all up and all that stuff. It's a good deal. And you know, I notice, you know, I see the vehicles they come up with. They're pretty nice vehicles. I haven't seen one on the air, but they do. Everybody needs help. But I'm just saying that I have some issues.
And if you'll let me, if you'll let me speak to the original part of your question, which is about seniors that are on fixed incomes. One of the main programs that we have at the food bank is called the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, or CSFP. And that's a program that's specifically designed for seniors only. And we provide an emergency food box for seniors every single month. Right now, over 5,300 seniors across Kern County are enrolled in that program, and many of which are here in Taft. And if there's anybody that is a senior citizen that is in need of that type of assistance, we have distributions that happen here in Taft monthly. And in addition to that, we actually do home distribution for those that can't get to a distribution. We actually deliver about 20% of those boxes across the county. So we're very focused as well on the senior citizen population and have a program specifically for them.
How do they get a hold of that program? How do they know about it? Is there a way you put reserves in churches or Chamber of Commerce or different places where they get information that they can participate in that? Or even here at City Hall?
I'll follow up our meeting today with providing the information to the clerk here who can figure out the best ways to distribute it. The distributions that happen here, if somebody isn't already enrolled, they can come and get in line, and we enroll them right then. They only have to enroll once, and they're considered enrolled for a year. So then they can partake in those resources for a year at that point. And there's no requirements other than demonstrating a certain age. They have to just demonstrate that they're over a certain age and then self-atest of their financial need, and then they qualify.
That to me, that's a big part of, I think, some of the bigger issues out there.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, some of the homeless, but some of the seniors are very proud. They don't want to take anything. You know, they really, really need it, but they had a lot of pride and the stigma attached to that. But I think the churches can help out tremendously in helping ones in their churches that really need it and not get hungry. Thank you.
Councilman Chivara?
Yeah, just briefly. If you could please, first of all, thank you. We appreciate what you guys do. There's definitely some folks out there that definitely need these resources, so we thank you very much. In addition to that, could you briefly explain to us, the viewers and myself, where does the finances come from? Where does the money come to pay for all of these services?
Yeah, so we have different types of programs at the food bank. Some of the programs are undergirded from federal resources, some from state resources, and then some from local and private donations. So it's kind of a combination of several different programs.
Perfect. Thank you.
Like, you know, I'll give an example. The senior, we receive funding from the state. Is it federally derived or state money?
For the seniors?
For the senior. Federal money that comes through the state. That's how it usually works. You know, it comes through Sacramento. Specifically for that program, we can only use that money for the senior program, distribution program. And then other monies are for more general uses, so we get different funding streams. Kern County is a very giving county, so we do get a lot of private donations. And we, actually, our food bank is, should I say it's the most efficient food bank?
Yeah, absolutely.
We've done, for the amount of pounds we distribute and the number of people we serve, if you do the ratio of client, of paid workers compared to distribution, we're the most efficient food bank in the state. We, the way we do that is really good staff and a lot of volunteers. We rely very heavily on volunteers that show up. Some of them are individuals, some are companies. They do, you know, like a volunteer day on a Saturday, and they all come out and box food. But we rely on volunteers, a very giving county. And because of that, we run a very, very efficient food bank. Our cost ratios are the lowest in the state, so.
So I hear what you're saying is that a lot of it comes from taxpayers.
Yes. Some of the, yes. A lot of the money that comes out is taxpayer money, either federal or state-driven. It usually comes through Sacramento. Sometimes it's a blend of federal and state money, but it comes down to us as a food bank.
Wonderful. So I think it's important to publicly thank all of us taxpayers for helping finances. Thank you.
Councilman Waldrup?
I'd just like to say thank you for what you do. It's a lot of work. I'm on a service club, and yeah, it's a lot of work.
Councilman Bryant?
Again, just underscored, thank you, gentlemen, for what you do. Unfortunately, it's needed more today than it has been in recent years. And we look forward to shrinking that need, but continuing to grow support for you guys as well.
I think the scariest number that I've heard all night long is the fact that it's, the need has doubled over the course of the last year. Doubled over the course of the last. That's scary prospect. I think having that you have the ability to step up and see that need, and we most certainly hope... certainly hope that that is a trend that gets reversed in short order. So, gentlemen, thank you very much for all you do, as well as the team of volunteers that help support your efforts. Thank you again. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, item number two is citizens' request public comments. We have none this evening, so we'll go right into the Planning Commissioner report. I don't see a Planning Commissioner. Yes, I do, there he is.
He's not in the right, same, same.
No, you're not. I was looking over there.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Nor, members of the council. We dealt with one item. It was a review of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which we actually adopted when we were adopting the downtown community plan. And since that was approved, well, it's been about two years, the government is continuing to produce more rules for ADUs. So we're looking at an update that'll be coming out probably towards the end of the year. Got our first look at all the new changes, and Mark is reorganizing things to make it a little more readable, if you can call code readable. But other than that, quick date.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for your help. Next up, council statements non-action. Councilman Waldrop, begin with you, sir.
Well, I'd like to have just a little statement of sort for the Finance Committee. I think they're doing a very good job for those that aren't here too, which we have some, I'm sure. But I like to brag on them because I just looked at these, all these bills here that they paid, and that's fantastic. I hope you can continue doing that small of a payment that we don't have to, we got more money left, maybe. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Bryant, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just want to underscore the work that you ladies do and all the folks who work in your office do. Somebody who works in that industry and honestly has and wanted to for twenty-five years, it's a labor of love, and oftentimes it's a, it's a job that a lot of folks don't understand but have high expectations for. And so we appreciate the work that you guys do every day, and thank you for continuing to do it well. I also want to just underscore, folks, if you could, if you can make it tonight, the Californians for Energy and Science meeting tonight at the Fox at six o'clock. Love to have anybody and everybody from the community that would like to attend. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Chivara?
Yes, again, thank you, ladies. We appreciate all your help. I also want to thank the rest of the city employees. Recently, we noticed that the city has been trying to rustle up some of these vagrances, which, I mean, maybe I'm speaking for myself, but we're just basically tired of seeing them on our streets. And so basically what I've noticed the city doing, they're going up, they were under the bridge over here on Kern Street, rustling them out of there, and then cleaning those, they had some trucks out there, clean up all the trash. That's not the only location, but I do know that it was the location that I observed. So thank you. We need to maintain this and continue this, and letting these vagrants know that they're not welcomed. They're not welcomed, especially with the behavior, and that we're not going to tolerate it. So thank you. In addition to that, we've been seeing the law enforcement out quite a bit, a lot. Thank you as well. And just to echo off of what Mr. Bryant was talking about, the meeting this night, listen, our community has got to stay involved. A lot of us are concerned about this or that. Listen, every community has been changing in the last few decades, and that includes us. But if we don't get involved in our community, then we don't have any right to complain. So again, please come out, please get involved, voice your opinion, talk about economic development. We need your guys' support and opinion. And that's it. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protam Cryer?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, community involvement is really important. You know, if you have any issues or any complaints or anything, come to council or meet different departments that addresses your issues that comes to hand. Now, another thing coming up, starting in October, you're going to see a sixty-dollar average increase in your electric bills. You're going to ask why is that? Well, PG&E, it was approved by the PUC for PG&E, started collecting for the wildfires and storms that subsidize that. So we're paying all that out of our taxpayer, out of our extra money out of our reserves to pay extra sixty dollars a month. I kind of don't agree with it. I think that is another issue that could be handled. If you have insurance, it should cover. You don't have insurance, well, you should have gotten insurance covered. Why should the taxpayers have to go ahead and subsidize it? So I'm probably going to get a lot of flack on that, but everybody in California will be impacted by it, and that's just the average. Electric bill would be sixty dollars and per month more, so be prepared. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ladies, once again, thank you all for everybody in the Finance Department, including one of your key players who is not here. I think she's on the other side of the United States, if I'm not mistaken. So hello, Teresa. How you doing? Also, one thing that many people don't know is everybody who works in finance, I speak a second language. If you can understand Munis, you speak a different language. I'm telling you right now, I've been trying to pick my way through that for twenty years, and man, that is a labor of love. So I respect what you do and the fact that you can do that. Everybody has said so many of the right things. I just want to say thank you all very much. I look forward to being at the Fox Theater, which is the reason why we're here so early today, so that we can do the people's business and then go enjoy what's going to take place at the Fox Theater. Next up, department reports. We have any department reports this evening? Seeing none? City Manager Statement, City Manager Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing additional.
All right. Thank you, sir. Future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen?
I have none. None here.
Seeing none? All right, then we'll move on to the Consent Calendar, items nine through thirteen. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the City Council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing none, those items are item number nine, which is the minutes for the September third regularly scheduled meeting. Item number ten, which is the payment of the bills that Councilman Waldrop was talking about, some twenty-one hundred and ninety-seven dollars worth. Item number eleven is authorizing by resolution the use of an application for one hundred sixty thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five for the California State of Good Repair Program for Transit Projects. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving the Proposed Project List for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Four, Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, California Senate Bill One, State of Good Repair Program, and Find That the Activity is Not a Project for the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) Set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA Guidelines." Item number twelve is the monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number twenty-one, August two thousand and twenty-four. Recommendation is receive and file the monthly report for August two thousand and twenty-four from Kern County Fire Station Number twenty-one, and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) Set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA Guidelines. Item number thirteen is a special event permit and encroachment permit for the First Baptist Church to host a Community Color Fund Run Walk and Suicidal Prevention Awareness Resource Fair on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Recommendation here is a motion to approve a resolution entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving Special Event Permit Number Two Thousand and Twenty-Four dash fifteen, an Encroachment Permit for the First Baptist Church to Host a Community Color Fund Run Walk and Suicidal Prevention Awareness Resource Fair Along the Rails to Trails Between Second Street and Its Western Terminus, enclosure of Sixth Street Between Main Street and Supply Row on Saturday, September the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) Set forth in Section fifteen oh six one B three of the SEQA Guidelines. Visiting councilmen wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar.
None here. No.
Hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items nine through thirteen. Motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protam Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Chivara?
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes, and that's approved on a five oh vote. That concludes the open portion of this evening's meeting, and I am happy to say we don't have a closed session this evening either, so we will be headed out to the Fox Theater here shortly.